All right, it's seven o'clock, poll of meeting order. Ms. Steve, would you take the role, please?
David Burris.
Here.
JR Cuddleston.
Here.
Deborah Johnston.
Here.
Bill Lukens.
Here.
Larry Pratt.
Here.
Craig Romi.
Here.
Caitlin Turner.
Here.
Linda Barbell.
Here.
Thank you.
Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance, please? All right, our first agenda item. Misty, would you swear in our new elected officials, please?
Craig Romi, Dave Burris, Linda Barbell, and Deborah Johnston, anyone joining?
Thank you to each of you for putting yourselves out there, stepping up and putting yourself in a position to be judged by your constituents. I appreciate that. Thank you. Takes us on to the election of president and vice president of the 2021, 2022 council. Nominations for president of the council. Second. Anyone else? All right. Well, we don't need to vote.
Bill accepts.
I accept. So that takes us to vice president. Nominate Dave Burris.
Second.
Any other nominations? Dave, do you accept?
I accept.
Well, I didn't.
Congratulations or condolences to each of you. All right, it takes us to the adoption of the agenda. Remind everyone about a conflict of interest. If there's anything that you have a conflict on, let the council know before you vote on it, please.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Need a motion to approve the minutes from the June 21st council meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the June 21st council meeting.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Need a motion to approve the current claim or the bills in between.
I make a motion to approve the bills in between for $122,302, $122,302 and 10 cents.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. A motion for the current claims.
I make a motion to accept current claims in an amount of $63,955.32.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. And our final claim is the Wells Fargo credit card.
I make a motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit card claims in the amount of $7,336.19.
Second emotion.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Brings us to communications from the public. Is there anybody in the public that would like to address the council? Got one down here. Just please come to the microphone and state your name and address.
My name is Patricia Hinton. I currently reside at four, four two South Chicago Street in Hot Springs, and I'm here to address the issue of the fireworks that our ordinance says is legal for two weeks. I have multiple medical conditions that are aggravated by the disruption of the loud noises of the fireworks. I live alone. I'm having difficulty with every system in my body, every organ in my body. I'm having difficulty functioning. I needed to bring my support animal tonight, which I have not had to do for a long time, bring him anywhere, and I was harassed coming in about him being with me. For several nights in a row, there have been loud explosions near my residence. And at least one of my conditions has a cumulative effect from these incendiary devices and explosions. My symptoms do not go away when the explosions are over. They are cumulative, and at this point, I don't know how long they're going to last because they are very severe right now. I can see a couple of days of quote celebration with fireworks on a limited scope. But this idea that with incident limits, people are disturbed in their homes where they are supposed to be safe or feel safe. The two weeks is absolutely uncalled for and detrimental, especially to people who have post-traumatic stress response, which a lot of the vets in this town do have. I'm not going to disclose the medical conditions that I have as I'm not required to do that. Suffice it to say, I have three that are being affected quite dramatically right now. And I get told that it's an ordinance and it's legal, so there's nothing that can be done. I was assaulted last night by noise and lights within minutes of my laying down to go to sleep. I felt the visible from the explosive devices, the sound waves carried through and hit my body. I can feel that. This is a neurological condition. It is not emotional. And as a citizen of Hot Springs, I should not have to deal with this. My health has affected it because, because people want to quote have fun. Well, I like to have fun too, and I have worked very long and hard to heal my body as much as I've been able to. And at this point, I don't know if all that work that I have done is in vain, and it's been almost two decades that I've been working on it. So I, I know I also am not the only one that thinks that this two-week period is excessive and uncalled for. And I would like to see the ordinance changed. I would have filled out a piece of paper, a complaint, but from how I can interpret that, because the fireworks are legal, the paperwork I would fill out would just be rubber stamped. It's not violating the law, so my complaint would be invalid. I already have enough stress without wasting my time filling out a form that doesn't even seem like it would do any good. And all I can say is slavery was legal as well, and how many millions of lives did slavery destroy? This ordinance may be legal, but it is damaging and detrimental to a large portion of the population of Hot Springs. Our homes ought to be our sanctuaries. We shouldn't have to be invaded in our own homes by these loud noises and disruptive lights. Thank you.
Are, are you open for some questions?
Well, it depends on the nature of them. I'm not going, I don't particularly want to divulge.
No, no, your, your, your condition is nobody's business but your own. That's not where this council is going to go. I just want to understand a few things. And before we get into the ordinance itself, you had mentioned that I don't remember your exact word, but when you came in, someone questioned you about your support animal.
Yes, sir.
Do you know if that was?
I don't know who it was. He did not identify himself. He just came up, approached me and said, this is a city building, and, and he demanded a letter from my doctor like I'm a kindergartner, and he said the dog has to have a vest. I know my rights around the ADA, and I know that neither of those things is correct.
Okay, so I'll follow up on that. You're, you're correct, and you're not the only person that has contacted council, City Hall, myself, about the duration of the fireworks this particular time. It's in the language of the state law that they're from June 27th, and our ordinance also allows them from June 27th to the first Sunday following July 4th itself. So in this particular case, it's the worst-case scenario because July 4th is on Sunday this year. There's another week that the fireworks are legal under our current ordinance. This ordinance was passed a year ago. I was on council at the time, and I voted for the ordinance. And I'll say in public, I completely missed looking at that, the first Sunday after July 4th itself. My sense is the council is going to be very open to looking at this ordinance again. Councilman Lukens at Public Safety has already identified that he's going to address it in public safety and see if we can do better the second time around. So the council isn't ignoring the concerns, but right now we're there isn't anything we can do about it. My hope is that the, the public as a whole will be respectful of the fact that July 4th is beyond us, and I hope that they've spent their fireworks. There aren't many left, but I certainly can't assure you of that.
Well, July 4th may be behind us. However, for a large majority or a large population of hot springs, the symptoms from the trauma from July 4th are not behind us.
Yeah.
We are still enduring this. And in fact, I believe, sir, if you were the mayor, I spoke to you earlier, and I should not, I had not mentioned what I was calling about, and you voluntarily assumed, which you admitted, that it was about the fireworks because you've had so many complaints. If there are so many complaints, I don't understand how you cannot say, you know, in, in in light of the health issues that this ordinance is causing, we have to curtail it. So my nervous system is being specifically damaged by these incendiary devices, and I'm being told I do not matter.
Ma'am, I don't want you to think that you don't matter. I'm a veteran. I have severe PTSD, and I understand what you're going through. From Saturday night, Friday night, Sunday night was not a good night for me also. So I just want you to understand, concur with the mayor that we, we, you know, Bill Lukens here is looking at this. Excuse me, one second.
I spoke with the police.
Ma'am, 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 finish.
He told me to have a good night after I was.
May I finish?
I was having a crisis.
Ma'am, may I finish? May I finish? Thank you. But I concur with Bill Lukens here for the safety commission that we are going to look at to see what can be done. Okay?
Yeah, for next year, right? So, so I have another.
Like I said, we're going to take a look at this. Okay?
I, I have another until, is it Sunday, to wonder whether or not I'm going to be assaulted with these incendiary devices. Is that correct? Or the legal time is over Sunday. Is that correct?
That is correct.
That's correct. Is that true, Mayor? You said it was a state mandate, correct? So it has come from the state.
Well, we've, we've adopted
Right.
South Dakota codified law into our ordinances, which allows them through next Saturday.
Right.
Yes. You're correct. When, when you called, I was not intending to be flippant in my response to you that you're welcome to talk to the council about the the fireworks. I apologize to you for saying it. It was not intended to be offensive or hurtful. It's just an acknowledgement that there have been that many calls.
Actually, I was very, I can't say happy, but I do appreciate that honesty, and it goes to show that there are a lot of people who do not agree with this. It was very telling that you, that you stated that and admitted it. So I do appreciate that.
Yeah.
And, and if I were the only one complaining, I could say maybe, okay, I'm overreacting, or maybe I'm wrong. I personally know a lot of people, and you have admitted that there are a lot of people before. I'm happy with this. And I don't understand how government works, and I don't see why there can't be some emergency measures taken to end this insanity.
So.
Not wait till next year and try and do better because who knows that we're not going to be in the same position next year, and hands are going to be thrown up. Oh, we can't do anything. It's the law. Laws can be changed. Orders can be rescinded.
So my second, more difficult question for you, going forward, as we begin having the conversation about what we're going to do, is, what is your opinion? Do you think that fireworks should not be allowed at all, or they should be limited to July 4th itself or a day on each side of July 4th? What's your feeling on that, Patricia?
I could see maybe two days, and I could see limiting, and one of those being the efficient city fireworks. Maybe one other day before or after for personal quote fun, and also limiting the types of fireworks, the ones that were being set off last night, which were probably 100 feet from me, were so loud and went up so high. Like I said, I could feel the sound waves against my skin and my eardrums. I could feel it. It was physical sensation. It wasn't hearing it. It was feeling the, the percussion against my body.
So those are all.
So the, the size of fireworks needs to be addressed, the duration of the time. Possibly, maybe if people want to set off fireworks, there can be a place set aside where it's not so populated, so if people choose to see them, they can go there. It's not inflicted on them in the privacy of their homes. So people who want to set the fireworks off can take their fireworks to a designated place and light them off, not just in the, in the street where it's 50 feet from a gas station or 100 feet from a neighbor.
All right. I don't want to take any more of your time. I want to give council an opportunity to ask questions they may have.
I just want to say thank you, Patricia. I know it, it's not always comfortable to come before council, but I appreciate hearing from, from you. I hear, I appreciate hearing this, the specific suggestions, and I did take notes and will, that will add into our discussion when we start discussing this on the 19th of July at our next public safety meeting. So thank you.
I agree with you, Patricia, and I did bring it forward to the mayor and the chairman of the council and our administrator that we needed to revisit this because there's a string of comments on Facebook that's 166 comments long. And 98% of them are against what we just are going through right now, and I have to agree, and I also don't agree with the 11 o'clock nighttime. That's just too late. People have to work in the morning and but yes, Edgemont is only four days long. I think I read in the paper Spearfish, Sturgis, they have a very limited time. And I gave out on that string of comments, the legislature, our legislators' emails, because it needs to change at the state level as well, as far as I'm concerned. And people have to get involved with helping do that, but I agree with you.
If I may, one of the things that I noticed on possibly the same thread that you're talking about, there were several comments that indicated people think that there are some people who are just too sensitive, or they just want to keep other people from having fun. So possibly some education about particularly with the vets in town, the PTSD, the ramifications of that on the neurological system, and that yes, it may manifest in what seems to be a way of just being oversensitive or emotional. The underlying causes are neurologic, and there are changes to the nervous system that people have no control over when they've been subjected to trauma.
Right.
And the public does not seem to understand that. So I'm trying to figure out some ways of bringing that to the attention of the public. So, you know, if, if, if people walk around and, and a cast on their leg from a broken leg, people kind of go out of their way maybe to help them or at least avoid hitting their leg, or if they're in a wheelchair, they'll open the door and they'll help them. With the neurological issues, they're invisible wounds, yet they can't be seen and which makes it very difficult for everyone involved, including the person dealing with them. But again, that goes to that, and that's how people can be accused of just being overly sensitive. You need to grow up, or you need to get over it, or you need to do this, or you need to do that. And, excuse me, and at a certain point, just living becomes almost impossible when when there is enough additional stress to the nervous system. And people, so I don't know if there's some way of educating the public on this and having them be more aware, especially with this being touted as the veterans' town. I'm quite appalled that this situation can be happening. And I would be willing to participate in helping to educate because I've had to educate myself in order to help myself.
Thank you for your efforts and your willingness to come up and address this.
I had a number of calls myself against it. And I saw in that ordinance, there's a height limit. Is that?
It was in the previous ordinance. There was a seven-foot height limit, and when we rewrote the ordinance, we, yeah. We referenced South Dakota codified law, and our statement was if it's legal to sell in South Dakota, then it's legal to, to use in the city of Hot Springs. That obviously needs to be addressed. So that's on the list.
Yeah, I think we're letting them shoot off way too long.
Yeah, and I, I had a discussion, informal discussion with the mayor, and you know, there's, there's some gray hair sitting up here, and when we were kids, the fireworks that we typically saw were bottle rockets, and if you had enough money, maybe you got to see some Roman candles and maybe a, a skyrocket. That's not what is being sold today. There's, there's mortars that I've not been in the military, but I have it on good authority that probably sound like our true artillery shells, and so our, our demographic has changed as, as Alderman Pratt in, in our discussions. We have a group of people in the United States that have been at war since, almost continually since 1990. So we have a whole new generation, a different generation of vets, not the, necessarily the generation that my father was. And we have now combined that with a whole different generation of fireworks that I couldn't imagine as a 10-year-old. I had to come to South Dakota to buy Black Cat firecrackers up from Nebraska. So things have changed in our and we need to change. And so I fully acknowledge everything you're saying, Patricia.
Thank you. And I agree with you on about the veterans and the types of fireworks. As a kid, I loved sparklers. I, I liked, you know, little things. I don't even know the names of them, but they certainly were not. And, and last night, what I was hearing, the booms were.
I heard those same booms, and I live a long way from you. And I think I know which ones you're talking about. So I just, I can't do anything about it, unfortunately, this season, but I, I just want to keep saying, I understand, I hear you, and we're going to work hard to make it right, not just change it a little bit to try to get you off our back. We're going to try to do this. We are going to do it right. That's my commitment.
And I fully understand what you're going through physi- physi- physically. I mean, it's, it's not good.
It's not.
It tears us up inside. I, 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 I know what you're feeling, so I want you to understand that too. Okay?
Thank you.
Behind you 100% on that, ma'am.
I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
And I also will interject that I did not my physical issues are not a result of being in a combat zone. So I do not have resources to help me. I can't just go to the VA. But I, my body still has the responses that someone who has been in combat can have or does have.
Well, there's nothing good about PTSD, but the good thing about knowing about PTSD is it's just not military. It comes from any time when a woman's been through trauma, when a man's been through trauma, when children have been through trauma. It could be a car wreck. It could be a dog biting you. Anything can trigger over a period of time a PTSD reaction. So yes, so I understand what you're saying. Yes, ma'am.
And, and then so unless, if you're a vet, you can get help, but if you're not a vet, then it's kind of bitter.
Yes, ma'am.
So I hope what you're hearing is that this council does care. We changed the ordinance to what it is now because we were trying to address a different set of problems. Bill talked about one of them, the heights of the fireworks. We worked real hard at it. We, it, it's not where it needs to be, but as everyone is assured, we will look into it and we'll get it right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, Patricia.
So we're less than a minute away from our, any other communications from the public? Okay, by the time you get to the microphone, I'm going to need to ask you to go ahead and take a seat. We have a 7:30 public hearing that we need to get out of the way, and then we'll come back to you right after our public hearing and hear what you have to say. Will that be okay?
So shall I introduce myself now and come back later or is that what you?
No, just go ahead and have a chair, and when we get through the public hearing, it shouldn't take very long, then we'll ask you to come back up and introduce. Then we'll ask you to come back up and introduce yourself and give us your address and talk with the council. All right, so we're at seven-thirty, a public hearing for a variance request from Eileen Oliger at four forty-six South Fifth Street, Petty is Petty's addition to Hot Springs, lot seven, block one. Is there anybody? Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak? If you want to address that particular pub, that issue?
Yes.
Okay. Pardon?
Just the one for this one.
We got the lady coming downstairs, sir.
Bob, if we can make sure we just address this item during this public hearing.
Yes.
Save the next one.
So if, if you want to speak to the, the variance request for Eileen Oliger, that's fair, that's appropriate. Go ahead and introduce yourself, again, your address and then speak to that issue if you would please.
My name is Glenn Denton. My address is four four five South Sixth Street. My property is adjacent to this one that you're considering tonight. And it puzzles me that my, that same space is being infringed and taken from me by Department of Transportation. And I had no, nothing to say about that, but here's someone asking to take the property that the city has. Is it same that I have? And nobody's stopping it. And there's no reason that it's to be utilized for anything other than a setback. I've read the papers, now I've got a certified letter, all of that. No one never talked to me. It says they talked to all the neighbors. I talked to my neighbors. No one talked to me. No one talked to my next-door neighbor or the one there or the rental behind it. So they've all said, no, we've never said anything about it and they're against it. Now, for me, I see no reason about the handicap session. There's no handicap entrance back there where she wants to put this. And it's way off the street. If she goes out there where she's at, she's got room to park three vehicles in there. I don't know if any of you went out and looked at that, but it, it just doesn't add up to what's being said. My property next door, Department of Transportation. Or, anyway, yes, they've been out there, they're tearing down some of my trees, right there. Within a stone's throw from where she's asking Bill out into the, the city's area. That just doesn't make any sense. Are, are we going to do fight for every citizen or are we going to give some citizens special privileges? I'm a thirty-year Marine retired. I spent another twenty years serving our country with veterans. I'm retired. I grew up in this country, born in Rushville, Nebraska. I have family that's lived here for over sixty years. I learned how to swim in this Evans Plunk. My dad died in a hospital up here and I'm told, well, you're not from Hot Springs. I have a sister that's lived here sixty years. I've had five nieces and nephews graduate from high school here. I'm not a stranger to Hot Springs. I've lived in, and lived here and in and out of it for over seventy years. I bought a house here five years ago. I've had nothing but problems. The same person that wants this, this call, the police department on me numerous times. I can't even count them. First, little things like my grandson.
Well, let's, let's then let's try to keep our comments specific to the request for the, for the variance.
I have a complaint about the request because it doesn't go with whatever, everything else is happening to the people that live right there. And none of us have been asked about it until we get this certified letter. And in the letter, it says we were all asked and all agreed. That is not true. Thank you.
So Glenn, you had mentioned that she's going to be taking land from the city.
Excuse me?
You, you had mentioned that she's going to be taking land from the city. The setback is on her own property. That's not going to infringe on the city. So your comparison that the state is taking some land and now the city's giving up some isn't a fair comparison.
It, it is. It's the same, which, what the, the, they're taking is actually the same air, same strip that she wants to put her carport. And that, and less than from here to that curtain.
I, I, I'm not aware that the state highway is going to be up on that close to Fifth Street.
At that intersection. They're changing the whole intersection. They're taking off part of the Dakota Mark gas. That island is coming off and they're coming on to my property. That fire hydrant's being moved. That whole area there back towards her property is being taken out. My first tree there, a black walnut tree, it's gone because it's too close for when they're doing the actual construction. So, I mean.
The carport that she wants though will be on her property on her side of the line. It's just that it won't be as far back from that line as the ordinances require. Right. So, but it will, it won't be infringing on the city's part of the property as far as over the line onto city property. It will be on her property.
I still don't agree with it and I think that I deserve my say-so.
Sure. Yes, yes, you do.
Can you have that right, sir? Do you have that right, sir?
Sir, you, you say that nobody else has, none of your other neighbors heard anything or were asked anything?
I didn't talk to all my neighbors. I'm talking about the two next to me and, and then there's a rental behind one of them. I talked to those and they said that no one talked to them about it.
Until you
No, no one talked to me, but my nephew was at the meeting there where she said she talked to everybody and she couldn't get a hold of anybody at my house because I live in California. This is not true. I was here all winter. I left in February because my wife had cancer treatment in California. I got back in May. No one's talked to me before, during, after, until I got this certified letter the other day. So, you know, somebody's trying to sweep this in real fast and they're not being honest.
I don't think that's fair.
Pardon?
This started in April when you weren't here and the certified letter is your official notification. So she wasn't required to do anything past the certified letter at all. So I don't think it's fair to say it's being swept.
Okay, maybe swept is the wrong word. I was avoided when everyone was supposed to be in contact. Well, you were gone, you said.
You said you were cert- a certive.
And she said she tried to contact me. Was I gone?
Did you receive a certified letter, sir?
I received it just the other day, this past week on, well, the date's on it. I brought it with me if you want to see it.
We, we know when we sent it and you signed for it.
I didn't.
We know when you sent it and you signed for it. We don't think that.
Yeah, I, I signed for it.
So let me ask you, sir, your, your objection to your neighbor having this is actually i- i- is, is what?
Well, my objection is, from what you all said, it was, she was supposed to get all of the neighbors' permission or talk to them. She didn't do that. So it's, it's, the whole thing is under false pretense. You look from her backyard, she's got a trailer that she temporarily parked there over five years ago because it was there when I bought that house. And now she wants this for temporary? How long is temporary? Five years?
It will kind of be crass and a waste there until her mother dies. Let's, let's try to stay away from that.
Yep.
The, the certified letters were to notify you that there isn't any requirement that the person that's requesting the variance personally speaks with everybody. The, the certified letter is giving you the opportunity to come in front of the council and voice your support or your opposition or your indifference to it.
I do not support it.
Okay.
Thank you, Glenn.
Thank you, Glenn. Any other questions for, for Glenn?
Yeah, please.
Anybody else having other questions for Glenn? All right. Anybody else who would like to speak to it?
Eileen Oliger. I would just ask if I can just, is this one, if I could address Glenn, you. When this was initially put out, you were not home and neither were the neighbors next door. And I want to clarify that since I'm the person that you're addressing here is that you were not here. And the people next door were not there. And when I was originally asked about this, I was asked to petition all of my neighbors. And I have, I have about twenty signatures on a petition that I was asked to go around and to speak to everybody about. But you were not, you were not home during that time. And then as this progressed, the letters went out and the situation is as such, but you were not there. And I wa- I do want to clarify, I have not called the police, so please don't accuse me of that, of calling the police multiple times. Because I haven't. And that's the honest to goodness truth. I haven't. I don't know why I'm being accused of multiple calling the police multiple times, but I haven't, Glenn.
Let's stay on topic about your
Right, about, so I just wanted to just clarify that because that's what I was accused of hearing and I'm just, you know, that's all. I just wanted to clarify that.
Did you have any other comments, Eileen?
Oh, I do have one question. What I was wondering is if the council would consider videotaping, like say even the planning and zoning and some of the other meetings. Because this way people could see what was going on, refer back to things, or if somebody was working and couldn't attend a meeting, that was just something that I had wanted to ask. You know, in relation to everything that I had been through is just if, if there is a way maybe of taping other meetings because I know that this one is videotaped. I, I just wanted to put that out and ask you, you know, if you guys would agree to that.
We're in the public hearing for the variance request right now, so they really can't consider that right now. It's okay.
Anything else? Anyone else want to address the variance request for Eileen Oliger? Council, do you have any questions, comments?
I know you've been through a lot of committee meetings and you've been before council a number of times, Eileen, so thank you for your endurance.
Your patience.
And I guess I just want to speak to Glenn. You made a comment, whether you chose the right words or not about sweeping under the rug. Th- this has been discussed in, I both, and I haven't been to the meetings, but in two or three planning and zoning committee meetings, Eileen has been before council two or three times. So this has been, this discussion has gone on publicly for quite some time.
All right. Any other comments from the public or the council? Hearing none, closed the public hearing at seven forty-three. And then I need a motion from council to either approve, disapprove or table the variance request for Eileen Oliger.
Make a motion that we approve the variance request for Eileen Oliger, four four six South Fifth Street. Petty addition to Hot Springs, lot seven, block one.
Second.
Just got you. Ms. T, would you call the roll, please?
Wait, did you close the public hearing before we voted?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We're closing seven forty-three.
Great, thank you. I missed that.
Um, I've got a question.
Okay.
How many, how many was of the certified letters were sent out?
I don't know the exact number. There was a good number. I can give you the list if you'd like to see it.
All I, all I wanted to know, did we, we get them all back or?
Yes, even, yep, even if nobody is there, we get the letter back unsigned. And I'm not sure, I haven't looked at how many names come back that way. But every one of them within the two hundred radius was sent.
Good enough. Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Sorry about that. I was just thinking when you were asking.
All right, Ms. T, would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Dave Burris.
Yes.
JR Huddleston.
Yes.
Deborah Johnston.
Yes.
Phil Lukens.
Yes.
Larry Pratt.
Epstein.
Craig Romi.
Epstein.
Caitlin Turner.
Yes.
Linda Barvell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Eileen. You have your variance. Next agenda item is personnel.
I just want to know if there's anything else I need to, I know I need to bring the sign back, the big metal sign, but that's, that's it, correct?
Yep.
Yes.
You should be issued a building permit from the development coordinator now to install the carport. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. JR, thank you for reminding me that Glenn asked to speak on a, um, other issue.
Yes, and now that that's all over, let me say that she complained about my last two building permits.
Okay, no, no, that, that's over.
I just wanted to let you
Well, that's over.
She never brought that up. Yeah, I talked to her.
So what else did you want to address the council about?
As far as the, the fireworks issue. I think that it's every citizen's responsibility, especially at this age, what we're going through in the United States to show the Fourth of July and what we stand for and who we stand for. And who, every one of us has a right to make that statement. That's where I served thirty years to defend is your right to make that statement. And I think I re- get that same right. I fired fireworks last night. I went to the police department, City Hall and asked them and got permission and copy of the order before I did it. I invited my ninety-year-old sister that lives here in town because she can't see but about ten feet but colors to come down, sit in my front yard along with about thirty other folks and watch fireworks. I thought there was nothing wrong with that. City Hall said there wasn't, police department says there wasn't. But now all of a sudden, now that it's over, we want to change the ordinance. It made any sense to me.
We don't want to do away with the fireworks on the Fourth and stuff. We just want to shorten the window on how many days they can shoot it off.
And I have no problem with shortening the days, sir.
Yeah.
But I believe I heard that we were using the wrong type of fireworks. If someone wanted to limit the size or fireworks that were being used.
I asked the question because it used to be an ordinance, but it's not no more.
The ordinance, as I understand it, is we go by the, our state of South Dakota's ordinance or regulations. Which I have a copy with that.
You were within all your rights with what you did last night.
I thought so and I'm sorry if I upset anyone, but there was reasons why we did it and there's reasons why I went to those agencies to ask if there was any problem with it and I was told there was none.
I hope some of your responsibility rubs off.
Pardon?
I say, I hope some of your responsibility rubs off because what you did was the proper way of going through.
Well, thank you. And I've been to talk to the chief and many people here in town to volunteer for things that you may have. I've served the public all my life, since I graduated from high school, went Marine Force, spent thirty years, twenty years as veterans counselor. I donated the money and founded a veterans memorial park for the guys I served with in Vietnam. I'm a wounded vet. Hundred percent disabled because of my combat time.
Thank you for all your service.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Privilege to serve our country for all those years. And I just hope that everyone else has a, a future of our country at heart as I
Glenn, sir. Go on, go on back. So you support having fireworks for a shorter period, for a shorter number of days? And then how about the hours? Currently it's from eight AM to eleven PM. How do you feel about that?
I don't see a problem with that, those hours. Eleven is not late. Everything, even for us old people. And I'm in my seventies, so I'm not a youngster anymore. When I bring my grandkids from, from Florida and Washington and generations all through and the only people that complain are the people that don't have anything to do and the only people that complain are the people that don't have anything to do or any support for the fireworks. So, I mean, if the city put on a great show that my 90-year-old sister could go in particular, participate in, then it wouldn't be so important to me to do a special one for her.
As a fellow veteran, thank you for your service. It's appreciated. All right. Any other communications from the public? We're stirring interest.
I'm Barb Walter, 2342 Jennings Avenue. I agree with the city to have their fireworks. What I don't agree with is the private people having. They have the right as well, but what I'm saying is that there are, you know, I get up at four thirty in the morning and I couldn't get to sleep because of my neighbors, you know, till after midnight, you know? And a lot of, I work at the state home and I was getting feedback from a lot of them residents. But I don't think that the public should be setting off fireworks way into one and two o'clock in the morning.
No, they shouldn't, even now.
You know, so that's all I wanted to say.
So are you?
Have nothing against what the city does, you know, with their fireworks. It's the public.
So are you saying no public fireworks?
No, I'm not. I'm saying be curtail the time.
Okay.
You know?
Number, number of days and hours.
What they're shooting off.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barb.
Thank you.
Jane Lukens at three, one, two.
Little love.
This thing is.
Gotta get close.
Like Jane Lukens at three, one, two, Metal Arc Drive. I would like to have them from 10 to 10. 11 is, you're starting to gear down. And all of a sudden these huge booms and we've been having them every night. Starting at nine and go until after 11. And I think I would like them from like the, the third and fourth, maybe the fifth, but two weeks is too long. It's getting annoying. I love fireworks, but it's getting to be too much because I understand the lady with the PTSD. It can start, I feel those booms, the pressure on my chest and it starts getting me upset. So I understand that. We have too many people who are with PTSD, with military, with non-military. And we have seniors and I think we, it went too far. And I keep telling my husband, we need to lessen the hours and the length. Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you, Jane.
Thank you.
Yes, I've been consistent input that I've received.
Any other communications from the public?
I will, as a citizen also, if I may, if I can just say right here, but one of my constituents as well, and I live, I am JR Huddleston, two, two, zero, seven Jennings Avenue. As she was more worried about her animals than herself, although it did startle her quite a bit that her animals have been sleeping in the corner of the closet since fireworks started. And visibly I heard one go off around 10:30 this morning and that dog literally bolted. So it is affecting not only us, but our pet family as well. So I promised my constituent I would speak up for her and I am doing so. I would like to see it at a max, two days before the fourth, two days after, 10 to 10. Thank you.
So a total of five days. Days before.
Any other communications from the public? All right. Now it takes us to personnel actions. Can I get a motion to approve personnel actions, item A through J?
I'll make a motion to approve personal action items A through J.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Brings us to our first ordinance, item A, the second reading ordinance of, the second reading of ordinance 1231.
Make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance 1231, a temporary ordinance regarding the issuance of local medical cannabis establishment permits and or licenses.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Teague, would you call the roll, please?
David Burris?
Yes.
JR Huddleston?
Yes.
Deborah Johnston?
Yes.
Bill Lukens?
Yes.
Larry Pratt?
Yes.
Craig Romi?
Yes.
Caitlin Turner?
Yes.
Linda Varvel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Ordinance item B, second reading of ordinance 1232.
I make a motion to approve the ordinance 1232, amend title 15 land usage chapter 155 zoning code 155 dot 002. Definitions. 155 dot 004G and 155 dot 025B uses permitted in order to add RV parks and campgrounds to the list of permitted uses in the highway service district.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, roll call.
David Burris?
Yes.
JR Huddleston?
Yes.
Deborah Johnston?
Yes.
Bill Lukens?
Yes.
Larry Pratt?
Yes.
Craig Romi?
Yes.
Caitlin Turner?
Yes.
Linda Varvel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you, council for having my back. I've got roll call highlighted. I've got every one of them highlighted here. And I just always go to non-roll call. So thank you for having my back. Last ordinance item C, second reading of ordinance 1233.
Make a motion to approve second reading ordinance 1233 supplemental appropriation ordinance.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Teague, would you call the roll, please?
David Burris?
Yes.
JR Huddleston?
Yes.
Deborah Johnston?
Yes.
Bill Lukens?
Yes.
Larry Pratt?
Yes.
Craig Romi?
Yes.
Caitlin Turner?
Yes.
Linda Varvel?
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion passes. Before we move on to, to new business, I just want to mention for the public that when we have the council read each one of these agenda items, it seems redundant. It's on the agenda for people in the audience that can read the agenda. If they have it, they know what it is. But at the same time, we're streaming this. So if people want to watch it and they don't have the agenda in front of them, if we simply ask for a motion for agenda item A, and we don't have the council read what that actual agenda item is, the public isn't going to know what you're voting on. So that's the reason that through legal counsel, previous legal councils, the advice to us is make sure that every one of these agenda items are read. So the public clearly understands what it is that the council is voting on, whether they're here in person or whether they're watching or viewing, streaming. So that's why we ask them to read every one of these. So we're on to new business item A, a possible motion discussion to set a budget hearing for July 27th and July 29th.
I'll make a motion to set budget hearing dates for July 27th and 29th, beginning at 5:00 PM each day with additional days to be added if needed to be held at the Mueller Civic Center, 801 South Sixth Street.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? The motion passes. New business item B, a possible motion discussion to approve change in the Wells Fargo Bank of the West First Interstate.
We won't have any changes. After the vote, the signatures will stay the same. So we don't need to act on this item.
Okay. So we still need to vote on this?
Nope.
Nope. All right. Well, we'll move on to new business item C, a possible motion discussion to approve the revised grant applications.
I'll make a motion to approve the revised grant application for the construction of a multi-aircraft hangar building and site grading to include construction administration, observation and materials testing. AIP number three dash four, six dash 0022 dash 015 dash 2021.
Second. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? The motion passes. Our last new business item D, possible motion discussion to set a public hearing.
I make a motion to set a public hearing on seven, nineteen, twenty-one at seven, 10:00 PM for retail on off sale wine and cider license application from HSP LOFT Properties LLC to be used at 311 North River Street.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? The motion passes. First committee report administrative and finance, Caitlin.
Our next admin finance meeting is July 12th at 1:00 PM at the Mueller Civic Center.
Thank you. Airport advisory, Bill?
Airport advisory committee met on Thursday, July 1st, eight AM at the airport. Members present were Larry Vederman, Ed Jensen, John O'Connell, Don Connor, Petra Wilson and Shane Miller. Employee, city employees present were Rick Brittenbach, Scott Soggy and Ivan Venner. Elected officials president were Mayor Nelson and myself. Guests present were Charlie Baker from KLJ Engineering and Rod Watts and Chase Palo from High Country Erectors. Under old business, Shane Miller gave an update on the kids aviation fun day. I gave a little update on that. The last council meeting, we had 100 to 150 total people. All events went very well. We did have identified some coordination improvements and that we'll implement next year when we have the event. Petra Wilson provided an update on the balloon festival planning. Right now there are 33 registered balloons. They will not go over 35 registrants for the event. And just as a reminder, that event will be the 27th of August through the 29th of August. Some action items is we need to make sure the area will be mowed and the bales removed by the 27th. The Nightglows will be in town this year. We, they still need volunteers. If anyone is interested in helping with the balloon festival, they can reach out to Petra Wilson. And I'm told that volunteers will receive a free ride from the balloon. And also told that for every balloon that goes up, they will always come down. Ivan Venner will serve as the airport location coordinator for the event. I provided an update on the hangar land lease agreement. We've worked really hard on that document and I think that was in the information side of your packets tonight. The, we went through the specifics of that agreement with the committee and the committee agrees and supports that version. So I think we are ready. If somebody wants to build a hangar, we can utilize that document to execute the land lease agreement. And it's also available for the, I think we have three leases, land leases coming due in November. So we're ready to go on those. I also provided an update to the committee that the land lease agreement that we have with South Dakota Wildland Fire, that the council approved that at the last council meeting. And that is now, I think with South Dakota Wildland Fire, waiting for their final execution. Under new business, Mayor Nelson introduced the new airport manager, Rick. And I'm still struggling with his name, Brittenbach. Rick started Monday, June 28th. Under airport metrics in June, we had, or actually in May, we had 23 balloon launches. In June, we had 49 balloon launches. In June, we had 81 individual fuel sales totaling 1,660.75 gallons of aviation fuel sold. And we had approximately 102 fixed wing flight operations. Our inventory is down to about 3,000 gallons and we've started the process of identifying the lowest bidder for the next load of fuel. We've done a, our recent increase in fuel price that the council approved. We've gone out on air nav and looked and within 65 miles of Hot Springs, we're kind of in the middle of the pack now as far as fuel prices. The lowest is $4.50 in Lusk, Wyoming and Rushville, Nebraska. The highest being $5.10 in Shadrin, Nebraska. So we're kind of right where we need to be. And given that the fuel price, wholesale fuel prices are climbing and we're, we're really selling fuel for our next purchase. I think we're in a good spot. Charlie Baker with KLJ and Rod Watts and Chase Palo with High Country Electors were present, Erectors were present along with committee chair Larry Vederman to discuss the change order for the T-hanger project. They discussed the reason and the need for the change order. We'd originally selected a bid that included hydraulic operated doors for the 10 T-hangers. Those are not available with for the buildings that were included in the, the successful bid. And so we're having to go with bifold doors, which are not the very favorite, but we did save money. So I think instead of $21,000 out of pocket cost for our $834,000 project, the city's out of pocket cost is going to be closer to 17. So we'll, we'll muddle through the bifold doors. In other committee items, Rick shared his vision for the airport. He believes that the airport is a gateway to Black Hills tourism. And also that it needs to be a is a place for first impressions for potential business development in the area and that the terminal itself needs to make a better first impression than it does. And so pictures that may have been around for 10 or 15 years and old T-shirt parts that are hanging over the doorway and things like that. He gave fair warning that if there's something hanging on the wall that you like it, you better get it because it's going away. So I think, I think Rick's going to be an excellent addition to our airport. It just, it just keeps getting better. Ed did a wonderful job while he was there. Really took the airport from a place that needed improvement, did a great job. Ivan took another step ahead and I think Rick's going to do an excellent job. In other items, we discuss, there was discussion regarding whether or not we should go to a courtesy car only versus the courtesy rental car setup that we currently have. And basically ground transportation continues to be a concern and is definitely a private business development opportunity. The meeting adjourned at nine 40 AM and our next meeting will be Thursday, August 5th, eight AM at the airport. Questions?
I have one. We approved loft or Uber permit several months ago. Has anyone checked into where they are? They were supposed to start. Offering, you know, Uber rides and that would be a wonderful deal if. Offering, you know, Uber rides and that would be a wonderful deal if. They would show up and we could utilize them.
That would, that would certainly help if, if, if they would. I don't know if they ever did execute the license or not.
We won't be actively involved in their business, but they did apply for the license and have it. When they have drivers and advertise, if we hear something, we'll let you know, but. We're not pressing them for.
Would it be worth the call to see where, where they're at or if it would?
John, you made a comment like you had to talk with someone.
They're waiting for the employees to build up post COVID. Right now they're taking care of what they've got in Rapid City and until. Everybody comes back to work, they're in the same boat as everybody else.
One of the things we've noticed just in the, the businesses around the hills that. The number of what appear to be young teenagers that are. Having their summer jobs, so I can certainly understand. The shortage of health, you know, that. They, they're probably experiencing just like we are here in Hot Springs, so. Yeah, great. It'd be great if they'd come down here. Yeah, I agree. Any other questions for Bill? Thank you, Bill. Custer Fall River Original Waste Management, Larry?
The next meeting will be this Thursday, eighty eighth at the Mueller Center here at seven P M.
Thank you, sir. Historic Preservation, Deborah?
Our meeting is tomorrow, July seventh at seven P M here at the Mueller Center.
Thank you. Evans Plunge Advisory, Linda?
The Evans Plunge Advisory Committee will meet July eighth at noon at the plunge.
All right, thank you. Parks Recreation Beautification, Larry?
See if I get this right, John. The next meeting will be the fourteenth here at the Mueller Center at three P M.
That is correct.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Planning and zoning, JR?
Planning and zoning met last June sixteenth. Attendees were Don Alstead, Joni Hill, Dwight Weena, James Foreboard, Wayne Hegeman. John Haraldston, Scott Sogi, Carrie Pyle, Caitlin Turner, Kate Negabauer and Eileen Oliger. Minutes moved by foreboard second by Weena to amend the minutes follows. Under new business that determined that city ordinances would override covenants. Be revised to determine that the more stringent of either city ordinances or property covenants would be followed. In Prince Gulf Course Covenants. Public hearing, Alstead opened the public hearing at seven ten on temporary ordinance twelve thirty one. Regarding issuing of local medical cannabis establishment permits or licenses. Alstead explained the procedure. For temporary ordinance and is the same as for permanent ordinance, ordinance, the committee was to look it over at this time. In preparation for state's regulations stated to come out in October of this year. He remarked that with nothing in place, no one would want to apply for it. Haraldston stated there's a separate committee. Working on everything so they'll be ready when the state comes out with their regulations. Alstead closed the hearing at seven fifteen P M. He'll move. To recommend approval to the city council to proceed with the temporary ordinance draft, second by foreboard. Public hearing, Alstead opened the public hearing at seven twenty to amend the current. City of Hot Springs zoning highway service district chapter one five five point zero two five adding RV parks to. The authorized use on land zone in the highway service district. Alstead explained. There was no place in the city zoned for RV campground. We only asked if this was to be rezoned. Alstead replied, it was not rezoning, just adding RV campgrounds to the current ordinance to allow it. So to allow for this, instead of going with use permitted on review. Anyone would still have to meet the requirements as to the size, et cetera. Alstead closed the heating hearing at seven twenty five P M. Foreboard moved to recommend to the city council, the ordinance twelve thirty two. Revising title fifteen land use chapter one five five. Zoning code drafts one five five point zero zero two one five five point zero zero four one five five. Point zero two five for approval, second by Weena. Under new business, Fall River Water user district easement request by Negabauer at the Hot Springs Airport. Kane Negabauer gave further explanation of request. Discussion included size and location of, of the new line. Fire flow with fire hydrant FAA and Airport Advisory Board approval. Hegeman moved to recommend city council approval of the easement. To put in the new line adjacent to the trap shooting area. Outside the fence extending northwest of the airport in the general area of the hangers and office, second by Weena. Request from resident to drive. For a dry path between the golf course and this neighbor, neighborhood country club estates. The Alstead tabled request until the requesters can be present. Airbnb rental allowed and golf course housing development. Upon discussion, it was agreed there was no recommendation because it is, because it is the jurisdiction. Of the homeowners association to approve or disapprove. Add flagpoles and antennas to city ordinance one five five point zero five one. Initial discussion to be further researched. Residential beehive requirements, state regulation will be followed if request arises. Under old business, additional living units eighty use for the discussion to be continued. Annexation for their discussion to be continued. Variance request permit for. The variance permit for Oliger needs two corrections. The zone should be residential A. Instead of mixed use. Number two, the request structure is twenty one feet into the twenty five foot setback. Alstead moved to recommend city council to approve for the setback variance for carport. Of twenty one foot in, into the twenty five foot setback needed by resident Pat Oliger. To be removed when no longer needed by said residents. Second by Hill adjournment motion at eight twenty five by foreboard second by Weena. Next meeting will be Wednesday, July twenty first at seven P M Mueller Center.
Any questions for JR? Thank you. Public Safety, Bill, JR?
The next public safety meeting will be Monday, July nineteenth, ten A M here at the Mueller Center and I just want to remind everybody this is a change. We've gone from the third Wednesday to the third Monday and gone from one P M to ten A M. Big change. July nineteenth.
Thank you. Public Works, Dave, Craig?
Public Works met on the twenty ninth here at the Civic Center at one P M. Those in attendance were Frank Bertold, Alan Stevens, Bob Nelson, Scott Sogi, Tracy Bastian, Craig Romi and myself. On new business, we, we're discussing. Trying to figure out where part of the old from is a restricted property or not. We had to send that to Garland to get a certification on that. Garbage tote location accessibility on one of our residents came into question. They were having trouble with some shrubbery and the trash truck having to back. Into traffic with the shrubbery there. So. That is been taken care of and I think we've come to a resolution with that. One of our other property owners came to the meeting to talk to us about city maintenance and limits. Existing ditch and culvert improvements. This was brought to us. By one of our citizens in cooperation with Craig Romi. And we're talking about the old. I guess it's trimmer. Is that correct? Craig, was that the correct name of that ditch? Anyway, we're looking at doing some. Improvement and possibly looking to see what the cost might be to over time get that filled in. But as of right now, it's in just. Discussion and information gathering at this point. We have a resolution with Dollar General is coming to town. Resolution on city quick claim have undeveloped. On a road, R O W for road and utilities easement. Discuss some big ticket items for budget sessions. For. For the shops and we're looking at some big ticket items. And I'm not quite sure if these prices are exact, but they are up there. Moving on. Discussion on getting crosswalks and everything painted. We were gonna get some. Estimates. I don't know if that's really going to work out for us. John, did we get anything on that?
We received one and we're supposed to receive two more by the first of the week.
Okay. But we would like to move as fast as possible on that. I know that has been a big topic. I guess in. The computer world or Facebook or whatever you call those. HVAC system in, at the Murph. We got that ordered. That's going to be contracted out. As far as installation. We're looking at the road washout areas on Happy Hollow, Boulder Falls. That is a work in motion, I believe, as of right now. And we discussed the need for the two hundred garbage totes. Those are pricey also. Utility department, water, water service for Martin Street Improvement District. We're getting stuff ready for the bid notice. Sewer inspection camera is ordered and we're still waiting on that. Moving on to code enforcements. They're putting together a complaint form. If I understand correctly, I'm not sure if it's made up as of yet, but if you. Have a complaint on a property or a nuisance, you will have to come in, fill it out. And it'll be noted, it actually helps the city. If we have ongoing issues with a property. This has a way of helping us so we know how to track it back. We have a guest speaker that's coming. That is scheduled for July twenty seventh. They are code enforcement specialists. They will, they're not taking over. They just, what they do is they advise and show you how to merge things together, help the community get their. Code enforcement a little easier to work together as a mesh. And I'm sure they have a lot of other things that we haven't even thought about. Our next meeting will be July thirteenth at one P M at Mueller Center.
Complaint thing, I guess you can get it online too and fill it out?
Yeah. And that is, that is set now.
We've had a complaint form since like twenty seventeen or sixteen.
Oh, I thought. Maybe I misunderstood. I thought we was going to update.
Okay, yeah, it is available online and we're. Massaging the look of it a little bit to be more consistent with a lot of the other forms that are used within the city. It is available online for people who want to. Write up and write up your complaint. The big advantage to the individuals. Is it, you have a piece of paper in hand when you come to city hall a week later and say, well, what have you done about, you know, this particular violation? If we've misplaced it. Then you can say, well, you know, just make a copy of mine and, and go ahead and, you know, follow through on it. So it, it helps you hold us accountable for making sure that violations are taken care of. Any other questions for Dave and Craig? Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Brings us to the Southern Hills Golf Course. I'd mentioned to you last time that I forgot to, to write it up, so. The Golf Course Advisory Committee met on Monday, June fourteenth, five o'clock at city hall. We had two topics for discussion. One being the two thousand twenty two golf course budget. And a fundraiser for a new mural on the wall below the evangelical free church at the top of University Avenue. Jason Happy is busy working on the budgets for the golf course. And the balloon community will be offering tethered balloon rides on the driving range at the golf course the evening of July twenty fourth. The money raised will be used for that new mural on the wall with a hot air balloon theme. And they're working on, you know, what that is going to look like and what they've drafted up so far. It's a beautiful mural to cover that wall. Will the evangelical free church? So I'm excited about that. The next golf course advisory meeting will be Monday, July twelfth, five o'clock at city hall and the public's welcome. Misty, that brings us to you.
Thank you. I want to welcome our new council member. Linda, it's new to you, but everyone else sees these at the first meeting of every month unless I get delayed. What you can expect on your finance officer reports are. The following, our year to date profit and loss summary report. That's month and year to date revenues and expenditures by fund. I do note in there that there's twenty six departments in the general fund alone. And on this report as well as the fund summary report, they're all lumped together. But a more detailed breakdown is available at city hall in a blue binder. It's a lot of paper, so I don't give that to you every month, but know if you're interested in looking at the breakdown by department specifically for the general fund. That's available. The fund summary report, so the year to date profit and loss, I do print those in color so you can see red. Red means that revenues have not yet met expenses. That's typical for our city, especially at the beginning of the year. That starts to balance out after our shoulder season or our tourist season and then our shoulder season. If you ever have any questions or concerns about any of the numbers you see on the report, please don't hesitate to ask. The next one is the fund summary report and that compares where we're at. Currently or actually against our budget, which was our plan for twenty twenty one, which we did about this same time, but in twenty twenty. It's nice again because it gives you the percentages. If something looks out of whack, there's usually a reason and we can answer it pretty quickly. So if you see anything again that concerns you, don't hesitate to ask. I also provide you cash balance report. Those are current balances in our Wells Fargo main checking. And usually our Bank of the West checking account by fund, but if anybody noticed, I forgot to give you the Bank of the West this time. So the backside of that was missing. Nobody asked me for it, so I guess nobody noticed, but. That you don't have the breakdown by fund for that account, but nothing has really changed since last month besides posting interest as we use our Wells Fargo as our main checking account. And the last thing that you can expect is investment reports. That has by institution and by investment type, all of the cash assets of the city. At the last month's end. In addition to the monthly financials, I like to take the opportunity in the memo to highlight specific relevant topics. I talked about budget planning in this one. Thanks for setting those dates. Typically two is enough, but we have scheduled a third meeting several times. If we need it, we will. Bob is gracious enough to not let these meetings go too late, so we'd rather schedule a third than work well into the late hours. The way it works, we have a software program. That we enter the estimates on and that's provided to council, but we also have Excel spreadsheets that let us make modifications in real time and the software doesn't let us do that, so. We are busy meeting with department heads, calculating estimates and preparing those revenues and some of the fixed expenses. John's going to meet with department heads and have them fill in, excuse me, those amounts that aren't fixed. We hope to have that done in time to provide budget preliminary budget information to the council by Friday, the twenty third, so that you have the weekend. And then Monday to, to review and then Monday to ask any questions before we start our budget hearings on Tuesday. The Excel spreadsheets don't print well, so I do print the sheets from our accounting software and then we review the Excel spreadsheets during our meetings. Thank you for going to the budget training. Thank you for going to the budget training, I hope you enjoyed yourself and thank you for signing up for the elected officials workshop. That's scheduled for Wednesday, July fourteenth in Pier. It's excellent, like all municipal league trainings and they're very valuable and worth the time. Now, this is also the time every year that I like to remind council members the important responsibility of review and approval of claims. Uh, I put rubber stamp in my notes before I heard that person mentioned it earlier, so that's why I smiled, but it does demand more than just a rubber stamp approval. Uh, as a rule, a claim report should contain enough detailed information for you to make a favorable determination. And although the finance office staff reviews, audits and enters the claims, the ultimate responsibility of approval is yours. You're both entitled and obligated to ask any and all questions necessary to be comfortable approving all the claims that are presented. Uh, there's administrative rules, internal and external policies, state purchasing laws. Bid laws that must be adhered to when we're spending taxpayer dollars. And it's important to remember that all of our purchasing happens in full view of the public. I'm available to review them with you prior to the council meeting. Um, Councilman Lukens, Mayor Nelson, uh, Councilwoman Turner, Johnston, uh, Councilman Romi. All of them have come and visited at different times, called and asked questions. I hope that you'll all support that I'm open to that and uh, there's not too many, I'll never get upset with questions you have about the claims. So please ask any and all questions you have and once again, welcome. Thank you for all all of you do to keep our city running, as always, my doors open and I appreciate your questions and interests, thanks.
Any questions for Misty? Thank you, Misty.
Linda, she's a really good support system.
Okay. Keep that in mind.
Uh, city administrator report, John.
All right, good evening, everybody, I'm gonna keep it short, I've been on holiday still, so a little bit longer. Didn't have much activity with the D O T or I S D, our suspended sidewalk consultant, we have had a lot of activity with Corv engineers, we have the four oh eight permit items. They also just issued the updated Fall River hydrology report, which is basically the flood study. Uh, they're looking for final approvals on that and will be coming to visit us in August. We also have all the N E P A documents uh, for the release of that waterway. Uh, clearing all the necessary hurdles that go with N E P A. We have had some activity with our historical buildings, we had three that the Historic Preservation Commission inspected with Scott. They did an exterior inspection and we sent out certified letters of those inspection reports. Uh, I'm happy to say that the petty building has activity again now. Um, contractor renewed his license and had a plan for what the absentee owner asked for cleanup and preparation for sale of the building. I also spoke with the Bodega Building Owner, uh, he has been here on two separate weekends. Adding stiffening and bracing to the existing false work for the roof. He intends to begin roof framing when lumber prices stabilize. Uh, foul crumb building, the owner did sign the receipt of the certified letter of our inspection, but no other contact. Uh, currently, we are pursuing a structural evaluation, uh, cursory structural evaluation of the building to see what condition is actually in. Our streets, maintenance and parks and utilities department. Has been very busy preparing for the various city events, we had Main Street Arts and Crafts Festival, which required cleaning of Centennial Park all the way to the Dip Bridge. Uh, that included all the mowing, weeding signage, bathroom repairs, clean out of the swimming areas at Brookside. They repeated those activities for the Fourth of July weekend. Alley maintenance goes, has been going along, they do the best they can to keep up on the alleys that have issues. Uh, so if you got an alley issue, please let us know so we can get you on the list. They've also been working before and after these storm events to keep the area drains open, that has become a. A big issue with falling leaves and and just general debris around these various storm drain inlets. They've also begun the repairs of the Episcopal Church stairway, um, replacing steps. You'll notice that's currently closed until the step repairs are done. Our wastewater treatment plant had a lightning strike which took out a control panel. For the sludge press that has been repaired and replaced. And our crews have responded to multiple callouts during the public use events within our parks, uh, including maintaining and barricades and installing and removing those. Prior to events. Another items Dollar General North is what I'm calling it, uh, is moving along, they've begun the building permitting process. They will be bringing their requests for a. Partial alley vacation forward to this council or a public hearing soon. I know that our city attorney has been looking at their documents and advising. Advising us what looks correct and also allowing them to prepare the documents. It will go before planning and zoning on the next round. We have met with K L J engineers for the North River Street in front of Evans Plunge Design Work. This was discussed several months ago, it's finally reaching a phase where we can be talking about it more and looking at costs. I am hopeful that we can see all the D O T costs on this bid letting as a comparison factor before we actually. Look at letting ours for bid sometime in twenty twenty two. Uh, they're, they're adding an additional cost if we want to include lighting design, which would be the reuse of our existing downtown decorative lighting that will be salvaged. During the Highway three eighteen, three eighty five project. We're also looking at improvements to the storm drainage in that low spot on that street. Had a lot of discussion about pedestrian crosswalk painting that worked last year was done beginning July sixth. So exactly one year ago today, we began that work, it was completed on July twenty first. We're looking at this year, the possibility of getting some assistance. From a contractor to assist us with this work, since the staffing of our street department, maintenance department. Is significantly reduced and we have other projects ongoing. All right, um, lastly. Thursday, July first, Evans Plunge had enough lifeguard and support staff to reopen the outdoor pool, we hope that will continue. Our library is needing applicants for full or part-time library clerk positions, immediate. Availability on those positions, if you're interested in a part-time or full-time job, please check in with the library. That's all I've got.
John, what is the youngest age that we can hire?
Slid dispatcher is fourteen, lifeguard is sixteen.
And anywhere else for the city?
We're looking for part-time with the Parks and Streets Department for mowing.
Have to be eighteen, right?
Streets and parks, you have to be eighteen.
Any other questions for John? About part-time library, library, all of that.
Eighteen.
Any other questions for John?
No, got a question or comment for the community, if you know of anybody who's looking for work, please send them our way. Everybody nationwide is having trouble getting employees back, but. We're a small population, so please consider working for the city, put your application in. Really could use the help right now.
Thank you, John. Um, I want to thank all of the Arts and Crafts Festival volunteers and city staff that worked so hard on making Centennial Park. Look great for the two thousand twenty one Arts and Crafts Festival. Uh, I talked with most of the vendors uh, during the festival. And every one of them appreciated the hard work put in by uh, volunteers and city staff to make the two thousand twenty one festival another successful year. I also want to thank all the volunteers and once again, the city staff for their many activities. For the July fourth holiday weekend, from the street dance on Friday night sponsored by the Hot Springs Rotary. The fireworks on Saturday, the firecracker five K, ten K mile race on Sunday, the parade, the chamber picnic. Uh, Hot Springs Cruiser Show and Shine and the fire quacker duck race on Sunday afternoon. A whole community came together to make this a great Fourth of July celebration and I want to thank everyone for their time. Uh, also want to talk a little bit about the fireworks, uh, obviously, it's uh. Been a passionate topic for everyone and I hope that the public uh, recognizes that. This council takes it seriously, uh, I appreciate Bill and J R making it a. An item for their next public safety meeting uh, to look at this again and figure out what the right solution to the to the issues are. Well, thank you for doing that, gentlemen, I appreciate it. And finally, as a new council takes office, I want to mention the time the council members take to prepare for each council meeting. Their council packets are prepared by the finance office and typically are ready to be picked up often as early as Thursday afternoon prior to the council meeting. This gives them the time necessary to review their packets for any questions they may have. And the ladies in fine in the finance office and the city administrator are always willing to answer their questions prior to the council meeting. If there aren't many questions during the council meeting itself, it's likely those questions have been asked and answered before the meeting. The fewer the questions, the more review the council is done before each meeting. They're doing their civic duty and I appreciate all of their personal time to give to serving their constituents, thank you, everyone. Uh, well, that's it for me. Uh, I'd like to say one thing. I got the opportunity the next day after the fireworks drive around and. I'd like to say thank you to all the citizens in town that cleaned up after themselves, it's not much to say, but it's a big thing, thank you, thank you to our citizens in Hot Springs. Do you want to have any questions for me, Mayor? Pardon?
I got questions, are you telling us we can continue to get these?
Enjoy them while, enjoy them while you have them.
I heard you say we can pick them up every Friday.
Enjoy them while you have them. Well, they're available, we're slow liking a transition, so.
Make the most of the journey.
Discussion, all in favor?
Hi, hi.
Opposed? Have a good evening, everyone.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.